YouTube tomorrow. So again, I appreciate your patience with us. It will be available. And if you are, if you had anticipated that we will be able to livestream, we're not able to tonight. So thank you for that. At this time, I would like to ask Reverend Woodbury, if he would come to the podium and offer our invocation for tonight. Thank you Reverend Woodbury. We appreciate you being here.
Good morning. Turn our Father and Savior to say, blessing thy itself. Therefore we don't take it lightly or with grace. Pray oh God that you would just have our way with our meeting tonight. Pray for our leadership and pray for our trustees and pray for our entire school community. Father, pray dear God that we will always be led by our spirit, that our children will continue to be the number one priority. Father, pray dear God that you can deliver the life and legacy of our dear friend and former colleague, Mr. Edward Whibley. Thank him for the lives that she's inspired. Pray dear God that she will enjoy the blessing of one from neighbor to whom. Pray in his own kind, Father, that you continue to bless us, and to bless Marion County Schools. This is the action in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Woodbury. Um, at this time, um, just to ask, Ms. Giles, is the appropriate media informed of our meeting tonight? Thank you. And now I'd just like to take a moment to welcome everybody that came out on this rainy night. Glad you're here. And hopefully we will make this meeting so that you feel better informed about Marion County Schools. So with that, we do have an established forum for tonight, so we will be able to move on. Welcome board members. Are we ready to get started?
Yes ma'am.
All right. If we will start, please, with the approval of the agenda for tonight, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Come with Madam Chair.
Um, Mr. Hill has given us a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Pridgen has properly seconded. We have a motion and properly seconded. We'll bring that to a vote. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so the motion carries. Now if we'll move to the approval of the minutes, we'll start with the regular meeting for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Thank you Reverend Brown. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Pridgen is properly seconded. We'll bring those minutes to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so the minutes carry for December thirteenth. Now minutes for the special call meeting on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
I have some motion.
Thank you, Ms. Pridgen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. We have a motion and properly seconded. Um, let's bring that motion to a vote for the minutes.
Can I, um, enter see the minute?
Oh, excuse me, like, do we have any discussion?
Vote part of that?
Yes.
See, I need mine to abstain because I should not have been involved in it, and it's got me voting.
Okay, so as far as for the special call meeting?
Right.
All right. So we need to change that motion to include, um, a change to the minutes that removes Mr. Hill for, from participation. So now we have a revised motion to accept the minutes with the changes. Um, may I have a motion for that, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you Reverend Brown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Pridgen. We have a motion and we are properly seconded. Let's bring that motion to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries with revisions. All right, thank you guys. So we're through, we're through item number five. Let's now move to item number six, and I will turn it over to Dr. Bethan.
Madam Chair, thank you. This is our favorite part of the board meeting where we can highlight the successes of our staff and students. We do want to take a moment to say Happy Board Appreciation Month to our Board of Education, and we'll be recognizing you in just a moment as well. At this time, if Madam Chair will please join me at the front.
Madam Chair, Dr. Bethan said, this is an exciting time to recognize our students and our staff who are doing really great things here in the District of Marion County. At this time, I would like to first recognize Powell Middle Middle. Front please. Our spelling bee winner for Powell Middle Middle School, we'd like to recognize Avia Palat. You'll come to the front, please. She's a twenty twenty-two spelling bee winner. Avia was also the winner last year to represent Powell Middle Middle School, and she finished sixty-sixth overall out of sixty-eight in the regional spelling bee. So congratulations to our Powell Middle Middle School winner. And as you do go well, you're the regional championship. All right, congratulations. And before you go, Avia's dad is here. If you're away, everybody, sir, one of our staff members here, Marion County. Thank you, sir, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Here we go. Well, why did you come back up? At this time, will our high school principals, both principals, please come forward. At this time, Marion County School District would like to recognize two student success stories from both of our high schools. As all of you know, high school students must take the end of the course test required by the state in some of their courses. End of course tests are rigorous, and the scores are important, and they are factored into the high school report cards and weighted in the student final grades. We have two students, juniors, here in Marion County School District that scored perfect scores, which is one hundred percent on the U.S. History End of Course Test from Semester One. And I know our principals won't take full credit, don't you? Good job. And they're paying the teachers. In no particular order, here we are for the scores, but Parker Bailey from Marion High School, if you'll come down, please, Parker. Glad you like it. And from Mullis High School, James McCannes. James is not here, so congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. The cap is off this time. He's going crazy now. And while he's doing it, with the fact that you're Parker, Bailey, you'll stand with us, recognize you as winner. Congratulations.
If you hear my favorite subject, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job. And now for our next recognition, it's time once again to announce our real life superhero of the month. Someone right here in Marion County School District. This person is nominated by the peers of the district for the superhero type for their efforts, their contributions, their skills, and their accomplishments while working here in Marion County School District. We know many times superheroes keep their extraordinary powers a secret. But we're here tonight to recognize one of our very own. The person we are recognizing tonight had nominations that shared details like this. She goes above and beyond the call of duty for her students and her school. She always participates in all of the school activities and devotes many hours after school, working on project, projects to support our themes. She stayed several days working on life-sized animals for our trip to, uh, to the Arton Unit. Worked on the, the school Christmas ornaments and edited pictures during her personal time at her home. She had several community, uh, committees and school-sponsored events. She is also an advocate for her students and wants them to be a part of all of the school activities, even though there's sometimes development delayed. She'll do whatever it takes, whatever's asked of her to support her students, her peers and the school. Whenever she's asked to complete a task, she does it. She does not do it with a complaint, but puts forth an extraordinary effort. She always takes the initiative to do whatever it takes to make our school run smoothly. So congratulations to this month's superhero, Miss Stephanie Steinhardt from the Academy Early Learned. Congratulations. At this time, we'd like to recognize the Marion County Board of Education for their work during South Carolina School Board Recognition Month. Each year, the school, South Carolina School Board Association chooses January as School Board Recognition Month. Marion County Board of Education, at this time, we're all standing. We thank you for the, for that. And Dr. Bethan, we'll turn it over to you as we recognize them for their efforts for our county.
Well, again, we want to thank our board for the tremendous work they do and the impact they make in the community. We do have several items to give you from our schools, from our students, but we do have a special video on some of the sweetest and cutest faces that you've ever seen. So we would just acknowledge them just in the end. Thank you to our Marion County Board of Education members. We appreciate your hard work and dedication for our schools, our students, and to this community. Thank you for the effort and your commitment. Happy Board Appreciation Month from the Academy of Marion Schools. Let me just give my board a hand. Thank you, God, to each of our participants who are holding. We have yard signs made, and we have to put this in the yard. So you want to know that our district is forward together because of you and your leadership. And again, we do have a few tokens, small tokens of appreciation from our schools. Thank you all for the support that you give us as a district and to our members as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
I can see it.
We do have an executive poster that we leave to the top, and we'll be ready for executive session. Um, we'll put this here. We'll ask Madam Chair if we can get a picture of a board member signing the executive principles.
I just, we're gonna just take a moment for those of you that came, and especially our young people and their parents, thank you. If you would like to leave at this time, you're welcome to. All right, board, if we'll, we're gonna continue with item nine, reports from administration. And I will turn that back over to you, Dr. Bethan.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, we will have our finance report from Ms. Angel Coop.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board, and Dr. Bethan. For through December of two thousand twenty-two, our year-to-date revenue was fifteen million, six seventy-two, five ninety-nine. And then less the expenses and encumbrances of seventeen million, nine seventy-four forty-two. That leaves our expenses over revenue by two million, two ninety-seven, eight forty-three. January will be when most of the stuff starts coming in from the taxes in bulk. I was unable to pull the Medicaid report for you this time because the internet's been down all day, but as soon as it gets back up, we will email it out to you so that y'all have that report. And we also, do y'all have any questions on that part? We also put in your packet the Marion County School District meal reimbursement rates.
If you would look in your notebook, it is in your pocket. This is based off a discussion about travel and the reimbursement rates, um, for staff. And so Ms. Coop will go over that information. We're not asking for action tonight, so it's more so for information purposes. It is in your binder in the pocket of your binder.
The top one is the current meal reimbursement rates we have. And I separated it out with the all-in-state and out-of-state. The bottom left is the meal reimbursement, reimbursement rates that I got off the state website. They usually update it every January, but this is from two thousand twenty-two. They haven't updated the twenty-three one yet. And then I just set over to the side, I did a comparison to show you the difference it would be as an increase if we went to the state and then the total overall. And again, this is just for your information to kind of review, and we'll probably bring a formal proposal at the next board meeting. If you have any questions on that.
I do. So this is just what we're gonna go up to, what, that, where we'll, we'll be reimbursed with, but our children, they don't have to pay any of this, right?
No, no. This is strictly from us.
I'm good with it.
Okay. Any other questions?
So we're just gonna bring this to vote next, next month.
I wanted the board to have an opportunity to just look at it. I think the discussion generated from board discussion, and so we just want to bring that information back to you.
Okay.
So Dr. Bethan, the meals that we don't use, are, are we able to give it to our children after-school programs or?
No, this is for when, like, most of this is covered on a professional development.
Definitely.
And so that just means if a teacher, um, attends a conference, or if a, if someone attends a conference, instead of the five dollars, I think it's a seven, I don't have mine in front of me.
Yeah. It's eight dollars.
Eight dollars. And so instead of the teacher getting five-dollar reimbursement, that teacher can get eight-dollar reimbursement.
And I'll double check the, make sure they don't change anything for two thousand twenty-three, just so we can include it. Y'all like that?
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much, and that will be on follow-up. Thank you.
We will have Ms. Melanie Gardner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, tonight I'm going to share with you our winter I-R-E-DY scores in comparison to our fall I-R-E-DY scores. I-R-E-DY is our formative assessment that we use in grades K through eight in some high school courses. Um, we're gonna talk about mathematics first. It's color-coded, and I think you have a copy of this. Uh, if you can see the dark green, that indicates students who are mid or above grade level. Light green, early on grade level, grade level. The yellow, one grade level below. Kind of orange, two grade levels below. The red is three plus grade levels below. So that's kind of the key we're gonna use throughout, so you have those colors in your mind. The next.
Yes, for a second, is this in our, in our notebook?
It's on your, on your computer.
On our computer.
Yeah, it's on your recent updates.
Okay.
Creates and updates is the second file.
Okay, thank you.
I think they found it.
So we have reading, uh, mathematics, sorry. Math is first. And so we're gonna look, our first bar, it, it gives us the fall testing, right? You can see the red, the pink, the yellow, the green. From fall to winter visually, you can see that we've done better, right? We've lessened the amount of red, we've increased the amount of green. So visually, you can see we have improved. Rate of improvement is still where we're working. We need to improve the rate in which we are improving. Let's go to the next slide. When we look at grade to grade, we can see that we saw improvement in the grade levels as well. This first slide shows K through five. And so you can see the fall testing is the first bar that compares to the second bar, which was winter test. And you have this in front of you too, if you, if you can't see this. So you can see that kindergarten had ninety-five percent in yellow. Right? And see, yellow is one grade level below. And so by the time we tested again in winter, we only had fifty-eight percent in yellow. And the rest had moved to on-grade level or mid to above grade level. You can see in first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, we decreased the amount of students who were two and three grade levels behind. While increasing the students who were mid, above, or on-grade level. And this is middle school. Middle school is a challenge across the, the state, the country, the nation. Uh, middle school is that age, but you can see that we have higher percentages of red with our middle school. And even though we have those high percentages, and even though we saw the growth, you can see that we have a lot of work to do with middle school, and we need to keep working our plan so that we could see the, the growth. And that was mine. Okay, so when we talk about math, we talk about achievement, and we talk about growth. And so this gives us a look at the different groups that the students are in. Remember, we talked about the different colors? And dark green is mid or above grade level. The light green is on-grade level. The yellow is one grade level below. The pink, orange is, uh, two grade levels below, and the red is three or more grade levels below, right? So what this chart talks about is how our progress towards our typical growth, okay? And so how many, what percentage of our students achieve that typical growth? Well, if you look at kindergarten, those students who were on early on grade level, eighty-three percent of those students are on track to meeting those growth, typical growth targets. Those kindergarten students who are one grade level below, eighty-eight percent of those are meeting the typical growth target. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So when we go to first grade, how many, what percent of students are meeting the growth target who are one grade level below?
Six.
Six. Good job. Good job. All right. So when we get to third grade, we see that we have different colors, right? We only have forty-six percent of the students who are one grade level below. Thirty-three percent of those who are two grade levels below. But we get the fifty percent for three or more grade levels below. So with this chart, when we're looking at this, we're looking at number, we're looking for numbers fifty percent or greater, okay? So when we have, when we had our meetings, um, when I met with the academic officers, and when we're meeting with principals, these are concerns that we are looking to address. And so we look, and we dive, we dive deeper, okay? And so we, this is our general information for mathematics. And we're looking for reading. All right, so reading has the same color scheme. And we're going to look at the next slide. And we'll see grades K through five. And this is reading. And so we can see that we had a little less red here than in the mathematics slide. And our students still made gains from fall to winter. And middle school. Middle school is still a challenge in reading, and we can see that we made gains from fall to winter. And here again is the same chart, and we're looking for numbers greater than fifty. And so this shows that the, the percentage of students who are meeting typical growth, and we want to see fifty percent or greater. My next task is an action item.
Ms. Gardner, before you start, I just want to, um, share, we can send out this link, um, so that you can have in case you want to, you know, look at it.
And dive deeper. Um, but as you can tell from the data, of, of course, we are excited about the growth. But again, that rate of growth is our focus, and middle school, um, continues to be a point of concern there. There has been improvement, but it's still significant work that needs to be done there. Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Excuse us, Gordon.
Yes.
You said look deeper, dive deeper. What, i- is this what you're gonna tell us, your action of how we're gonna get those numbers up? Cause looking at it to see two, three years levels below is, I need to know, like.
Right.
Ms. Sweeney and Mr. Bellamy, they can come back. They have gone into the pa- plan of improvement. When she says dive deeper at the principal level, we don't just look at it a whole district or whole school. They're able to look at it teacher by teacher. So when we say dive deeper and on our end, and are these things working? And if they're not working, do, how can we shift and try something else?
I know, cause it, it, when you look at a chart and you see above at grade level or three grade levels below, it kind of, it's kind of like, oh no.
Now, we showed you this when we took it in, this is the, where we've gone since. Can we? The rate, right. That's all, when we say the rate of growth, um, you have to have growth before you get to achievement. And so again, we're excited that we have growth, meaning we're going in a direct, right direction. But because the students, as you can see where they come in at the kindergarten level. The rate of growth has to be so much more based on where they start. So that's our conversation. How do you?
Students that are in third grade that are three levels below reading, that are, are they, don't go up to the fourth grade?
Well, they, um, the state has a law called Read to Succeed. The state will help identify those kids, and they will more than likely be the kids identified for summer reading camp. Meaning they have to go to a state prescribed program during the summer.
So my question to you, Dr. Bate, what are new schedule that we running, like at the, the middle school and high school? Is it helping our children? You know how they do this block and then they're done with those classes and they go? Is it making a difference with their learning abilities?
Okay, say that one more time.
So you know how we do a new schedule, you'll have like math this term or semester or block. And you're learning all this math in six to eight, nine weeks, and then you're done with that class. Have we seen any growth with that learning style?
Now, this data does not that. Only block schedule is with our high schools. Our regular schools, you're in those courses year round.
Okay.
Year long.
Okay.
So we, we don't do block with our elementary kids. They are in math all year, they're reading all year.
So we'll see the elevation.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. I'm sorry, Ms. Gordon.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Okay, any other questions?
I, I, I have one. I know that we have made a change over to I ready. Has it paid off? In what you were hoping it would do in the change from moving from math to I ready? Is this, is it serving you the way you were expecting it to serve you?
Ms. Gordon is our I ready expert. Um, I think the major factor why you have so many districts changing from map to I ready, because I ready is aligned to standards and is based on standards, not just skills, but on standards. And at the end of the year, your students are judged and graded or evaluated on state standards. So it gives you more of an alignment. Of course, I know that, um, map has something called the Kingsbury Study. And then they've had another correlation study where it aligns the standards. But the activities and the lessons with I ready are standard space. And Ms. Gordon, if you want to speak to that.
I would say yes. Um, I'm very excited about I ready, simply because of the materials that are provided, the lessons that are provided and the resources that are provided for teachers that we had to create with math. And so with, with this, the teachers can log in and their class is already put into groups. And it outlines not only, uh, you may remember Descartes, but you, it outlines what they need to know. Plus, it gives you sample lessons and materials that you can use with your small groups to work with these children. So, so definitely with math, we had to put in that extra to find the lessons, to create the lessons for the small group, and this takes out that step for our teachers.
Calendar, Ms. Gordon, it's not on there, but they.
Okay, everybody has a copy of the calendar. Um, my favorite time of year, planning for the next year. So we assembled our calendar committee. Uh, our calendar committee is comprised of district office staff members, school administrators, uh, school staff members and parents. And we met several times, uh, maybe three times to discuss our calendar. And this is the calendar, one of two options that we submitted to the staff. The staff voted on the two options that we have, and this is the winning calendar from the staff. And tonight I ask that you approve our this district calendar for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Board members, do y'all have any questions at this time as it relates to the calendar? Yes.
How is the new modified schedule working out for y'all compared to the old schedule?
You know, we get a, a lot of feedback, and most of the feedback that we've received has been positive from, um, the parents, the teachers. We have a few that would prefer the traditional schedule, but with anything, you're going to have those who prefer not to change. Uh, we're looking to see how starting earlier will affect us with testing and scores. I can tell you that's testing with ESC before we left for Christmas and coming back to start a new semester worked wonders for the high school. Um, it was much easier to start fresh at the new year. So there were, there have been many positives to this modified schedule that we've adopted.
So I have a question for you, Ms. Gordon. Tell me about the, the weather days. So I see that they're like in the yellow, so if there is bad weather, that's gonna be a day we use to make up a day.
That's right.
But if not, then the children are gonna be in school like the eighteenth of March. That's a weather day.
Okay, so the, what, yellow days are staff development days, which means the students would be out of school. But if we have a bad weather day that we have to make up.
They will come that.
They would come to school.
That's what I thought. We need to make sure that's good.
Board, any other questions that you have? Ms. Gordon. Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to offer a motion.
Thank you, Ms. White.
I'll take the second.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. White, and it's properly second by Ms. Foxworth. Any more discussions before we bring it to vote? With no discussion, can we bring this motion to vote? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We have a unanimous acceptance of the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four school count. Thank you, school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I do have questions.
Yes.
I, I'm, uh, the the, the I ready is a curriculum, more or less, right?
Okay, um.
You said the. Is there a community approach to that? Is that something that say of?
It's a good question.
Yeah, uh, I had someone approach me a childcare program. And they have interest in something that deals with learning loss. And so, um, it seems like that this should be something that would be aligned in there. And so how you, how do you reach out to, um, childcare programs that wanna go to that level with their, um, their summer school students? Is there something?
So there are some parent, um, guides and some parent links on how parents can use this. And we can work with the programs to share that information with them.
So I could just tell them to contact your office?
I, I have a question. On the, on the last chart we saw, it's got that out of eight hundred and two students, eighty-nine percent or three levels or below. And, um, Dr. Bate said we, well, I'm like, they go to summer school for remediation. There's nothing we can. I mean, I'm sure y'all do something daily, but I mean.
We have.
We also have summer programs for, those would be the, your eighth graders. We also have summer programs for eighth graders.
We need something for some.
And we do, we do, we have, um, interventionists in the schools. We also have intervention time that is online as well. And with the, um, online interventions, is it twice a week, forty-five minutes?
Twice a week, forty-five minutes.
Additional. And so schools are doing different things. Several of our schools also have, um, after school programs that we are grateful that have been funded through, um, the former governor Nikki Haley's, um, foundation, the original six. And I think right now we have Tomato and I know Creek Bridge, um, are schools that have that funded, um, those after schools programs funded through that foundation as well. So we do have after school programs, interventionist as well as online interventions. And why we use online interventions as well, because unfortunately, our needs are larger than the personnel. And so we have to use every resource possible.
Everything and we still have this high score. It's just sad. And I know everybody's, I, I understand how hard it is, but that, that's really alarming to me.
With that eighth grade. Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Good evening, Mrs. Axton. You have before you the operations report for January. I'll highlight some items. In the December meeting, we discussed the twelve electric buses that the district is getting from the state of South Carolina. We're now waiting on the state to come and desert many area before, those, those twelve buses ago. They were somebody in one area in the district, the house, all twelve buses, simply for the infrastructure part. Having the electronic, many of the, the electrical connections at all three can get kind of costly. So that we're waiting on them to come and identify the area in which, uh, those smoke that buses will go. Um, we have ordered the school boards for Mullins High School softball and, and baseball. Um, they went out sometime last year, and we expect them to be in by the beginning of softball and baseball season. Uh, picnic tables will order for the middle schools, uh, Johnican, Tomato, and Creek Bridge. The tables will be, begin to be delivered on January twenty-seventh at Johnican. The district is in the process of evaluating athletics and looking at possible, uh, reconstruction or restructuring of our athletic departments, uh, on today.
What does that mean?
I was looking at how we are right now, looking at our supplements, looking at everything that we do athletically. And seeing what is the best way to operate for me in county schools. Um, the system that works in Florence may not work for us in Maine. Um, what we have done in the past may not be working right now. Uh, we just need to look at it and see.
You mean scheduling and stuff?
Scheduling, uh, staffing, supplements, everything that, that we have athletically. And, um, on today I spoke with representatives from A three communications. We should have the weapons detection centers within the next three to four weeks.
Where will they be?
They're going to the high schools and middle schools.
Yeah, we're, we're also gonna use them at games.
Yes, it should be.
Is it, is it like something at the doorway or for one?
It's a, the demonstration that you all.
Did the demonstration.
They are walk-through. It weighs, it weighs about twenty-five pounds, so they, they can be moved up about. You can use it outside, you can use the inside, you can use it at multiple doors.
It won't be a big clogged up line having to go through it.
No, ma'am, if you, if you have been through TSA lately, it's kind of like TSA. Um, you don't have to take everything out of your pockets. It can identify, it identifies weapons. Not necessarily, you know, changing those sorts of things. And there would be multiples at locations, not just one at each location. Any other questions?
I do, I have a question. So, and this might be a Dr. Bate question, so you should have to, whenever you. With the twelve electric buses coming, we have old buses that we won't be using. I do know when it came down to land, uh, community or government place could request it. Can community and government places request the old buses?
We have not gotten any guidance. School buses are owned by the state, and we have not gotten any guidance. That would be a state decision.
Okay.
Once a bus, we receive a new bus, they take that one away.
Got you. Just trying to get our children to learn vegetation outside of school.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Starkey? Thank you, Mr. Starkey.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Dr. Bate came to me and asked me to start working on a plan for, uh, three-year cycle planning of updating our facilities and things like that. Um, started working on that. We came to the determination to probably have four or five members of the committee, the operations, facilities, head of maintenance. Um, most likely have somebody else at district level, and then we would bring in the principal at each school when we were considering that school for update. Um, we've already been working as long and long as we can with, with things. We've already got plans to do some more, um, move carpet to tile over this summer, some painting projects this summer, and then, um, some, uh, bathroom renovations hopefully, um, this summer. Had a few conversations with some construction companies to see what avenues we can take to try to see if we can make that happen this summer. The other stuff they had listed, uh, North Mullins primary is that side door is back up and running now where, um, there was an incident with, uh, uh, U-Haul truck and voter registration came. The Marionage fact project, they over Thanksgiving, they did several units over Christmas break. They did several more units that y'all will, it approved for, um, three of the units. Because of supply chain issues that are just existing right now, did not come in in time. But I'm hoping to get those done this summer. The good, I guess, the good news, not necessarily for the administrator, but they're smaller units that are in office spaces, not in covering our classrooms. So our students should be more comfortable, maybe not our administrators, but, um, hopefully those being by the summer when they start on the MIS that was approved earlier in the school year. And, um, then lastly, just waiting, everything can approve, just waiting on the finalization of the spring branch and Centenary Community Center. Um, found the data line to make those things happen. Yes, ma'am.
So Jordan, why you look at me like that? Okay, so it won't be a hard question. The team that you're making up for the facilities planning, is, is there a way to put like, you know how some people always see something so they don't see it as being bad? So could you like get another person, like a community person on that committee or P- PTO person? Cause I personally, I'm a parent, so I go to some of the schools all the time. And to walk into a building when it's raining and we have bucket spaces, you might not know it, but you might need somebody that sees it on a daily basis at that facility to say, hey, I wanna be a part of that. Because I, I was there at six o'clock and know that like that worker, you know, so can we think about opening it up for one more question? Just another eye.
We'll take that into consideration, for sure.
That, uh, when we've had, uh, Facilities Task Force before, we have had, um, we've had the city of Mullins administrator before. We've had.
We've had um parents before, so we, we can do that. But you are right, um, sometimes an outsider is gonna see more detail than someone that's looking at um the, the scenery all the time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Hello, Ms. Grant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. In your packet, we did include the personnel actions for you to refer to. Um, these are the only actions we have. There has been no addendum. We will not need executive session and we are asking for these um recommendations to be approved by the board.
Ms. Grant, what's a, um, what do you, what's considered a behavior law?
Dr. Bate, that um project was covered under special funds that we already saved this year.
They pretty much if, trying to be proactive, um, trying to be proactive. Um, trying to monitor hallways. They have a variety of things, monitor hallways, especially during transition times. Um, because we've had concerns of, you know, children not being where they need to be. Um, being able to assist, uh mentoring if that's needed with a child that shows potential for behavior. So they do anything that's a special, I hope I had to say it, a one-time pot. And so these are temporary and we got for, it wasn't labeled behavior, but it was labeled, uh labeled for um mental, social, emotional, um, some funds that came from the state based on us returning after COVID. And so they kind of do. Now, I would assume everybody has some type, well, I can't say a whole room, but everybody has space. But it's not like a character coach where the kids with them all day, not like that. They're more mobile. They're more mobile, more boots on the ground.
Actually, I went to Mullins, um, I like to set up y'all going there. And you know, what you're talking about now, I met some of the guys and what they give them. And I found like, nobody good, he is actually still young, you know, some, they truck kids. They're working with them and they have worked for some kids um so far in my area. Parents have, you know, welcomed me to say thank you for that. And also I hope I'm to go with, that was a good idea.
And those are temporary funds, and so we'll see how it works. And when I say temporary, meaning we just got one-time funds, there are no guarantee we'll get them again. But if it's something that's working, that may be something during budget cycle, we come back and discuss with the board. We, we have, I'm not sure if they've made a hire yet, but they have been extending those funds too. Thank you for adding that, Mr. Dozier.
Any questions for Ms. Grant?
So how do you think the incentive program worked for the year?
I do have an update for that. Do y'all want to take your personnel actions?
If I can have a motion to accept um the superintendent's recommendations for personnel actions for January seventeenth? All right, Mr. Hill has given us a motion. Do we have a second? So we have, and it's properly second, um, by Mr. Dozier, so um.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you called for the question?
Yes, I'm getting ready to. Do we have any discussion? Thank you, Reverend Brown.
You're welcome. When someone retires in the district, uh, is their position advertised before a rehire? Is it?
Say that again, I run around.
When someone retires, uh whether the district office or a teacher, uh and want to come back, before they come back, are their positions advertised for a certain period of time?
We have to, um, we do have retirees that decide that they want to return. Any retiree, does not matter what position, uh, we have to advertise their position. And at least to make sure that there's not another suitable applicant out there. So we advertise all retiree positions.
Did anybody apply for any of the positions here at the district office when you did advertise?
I, I, she's saying if at district office, do we get?
So the one on this position, I've, um, there was conversation with the board last month for continuation for this.
She's not asking by anyone in particular, just in general.
Yes, ma'am, we advertise all of our positions.
Uh, anybody come for an interview for a superintendent of the human affairs position?
Say that again now.
Did anyone apply for the uh superintendent, assistant superintendent's position or for the human affairs?
It'll be, it'll be open tomorrow. That one isn't posted yet, or is it posted?
So the assistant superintendent position will be posted after this evening.
Talk with the board about it in December, but we still have to, as we shared with the board, we still have to advertise. Any position that goes into retiree mode, you have to advertise and give an opportunity for anyone that may want to apply. And then retirees are made aware that at the time they make the decision to retire.
Okay, thank you.
And even with that position as well.
Thank you, Reverend Brown. Um, do you have a question, a spot for?
I do, but I don't think I can say it out loud.
Well, if it's personnel, then.
I can wait. So we, we still have to vote on this, so I can't.
You, you don't have to, you can table it until after executive session.
Okay, we'll, we'll table the, um, the motion that was presented um until after our executive session.
Um, we did provide an update uh for our attendance incentive. Uh, we did know that with the modified calendar prior to going out for winter break, those weeks before that week of Thanksgiving break and the three weeks before that winter break, that those were um important weeks that we ensured uh if staff could make their um calendars, their availability of being um what we refer to as boots on the ground in that first semester with EOCs with exams and with that transition. Just wanted to give you a breakdown in your packet. Um, for appropriate attendance, each of those four weeks, that was that two hundred and fifty dollars that could be earned per week. And this is a breakdown of what was earned, um, looking at the decrease in absences. Um, we would say that it did have some impact and we felt that the transition went much smoother of in and out of semester. So we would, we felt like it had a positive impact, impact on our staff.
Money-wise, was it, if we paid out less to the people that came, that stayed, then we would pay subs? Yes, we have fewer subs, but then these funds are federal funds. So it is actually uh almost like a double benefit, to be honest, if that makes sense, what I'm saying. You, you save on subs, but then because we were able to tie it to attendance, which is allowable, a little federal funds, it didn't cost us locally.
So you're saying we might do it again?
Now, I don't make um incentives off the top. We, we look at the data, the budget, and we do an analysis before we make any public promises. Want to be legal at all times. The money has an effect on health. That is interesting. Um, but anytime that we're able to provide um incentives for staff and um and it falls within our guidelines, we try to do um so, because our, our staff, they work hard. They, they, they really um work hard. And so any incentive that we're even able to offer towards the end of the year, we can make it happen, that is always our commitment. Not to go into a lot of detail, um, you have before you different happenings. We had a busy December and we have been extremely busy since we returned in January. Um, we do like the calendar where we closed out first semester before the holidays. We think that was very beneficial. Many of our students during the holidays had a lot of extension activities. We had children that were on train rides through the Polar Express. Students had never been on a train ride. We had field studies um to some science and STEM um places. We had uh students that have been to visit the continuum um in Lake City, which is um funded through the Darlemore Foundation. Um, we've had uh academic challenge teams, a lot of our clubs and different organizations that have been to matches in various places. And so just very busy and that's what we want. Um, before I move into the updates of our departments, I'm going to ask that Dr. Bunch come. Mrs. Rush was not able to be with us um tonight. And so Dr. Bunch is going to provide some information on the discipline task force. But if you will look in the pocket of your notebook, um, due to the internet not working, these were hyperlinks. And so we were not able, we're not able to open the hyperlinks, but I did just get a uh message from technology um that the internet provider has um discovered the issue and we should be up and running by the time we come to school tomorrow. But we have given you a paper copy um since we were not able to do hyper, so Dr. Bunch.
Just good afternoon again. So if you look at the packet that was in the pocket of your uh notebook, there it looks like this. And these are the updates or questions and information that Ms. Rush wanted to share with you. You got, you'll have time to read those and I ask questions along the way if you'd like. And the most important one is just who is on the disciplinary task force. Each year, uh, members of our uh school district and parents are requested to be on this committee. They meet multiple times. It's not a one-time meeting. They meet multiple times throughout the year to go through uh the information that we have on disciplinary actions that's happened in our schools around our district. And also to go back and look at our um disciplinary code, that we have to make any changes and updates as uh we change in our school district. So I do want to share with you question number one, and then the rest you can read and look at those and I'll answer any questions you might have. But the first one is just who's on the task force. Each school uh submits the names of the following people. One assistant principal from each school, a teacher of the year from each school, have a staff member and also a school improvement council member who are invited to attend. So I did attend the last meeting, uh, and we were well attended and with our school staffs and our families. Uh, there began the review. I will tell you, is it extensive? It's not a very quick thing. There's a lot of uh conversation, a lot of discussion, especially when you get into the different levels and different ages of our students. And we meet the many challenges uh of the discipline codes that we uh face each year. So I do share this with you and all the information that you had there. Unfortunately, can't open that, is answered in that packet. I encourage you to look at that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those or write down the question and get those answered for you.
And I will say that the dis- discipline task force will continue to meet throughout the semester. There has been a question posed about cell phones. I have spoken to Ms. Rush and that particular team and they will make sure they do pull the cell phone policy um to see if there are any updates, changes, or new recommendations that need to be made with cell phones um in regards to on campus and how um discipline action occurs with cell phones as well. So that will be a part of that discipline task force. Another request that has come from our elementary principals, um, I want to thank this board. Um, when we did have some concerns at the beginning of the year and you immediately supported um our stance on behavior and made some mid-year changes. And so based on those mid-year changes, we've gotten some positive feedback from several of our middle and high school principals. Um, our elementary principals are asking us to take a, a, a real good look at the discipline policies at the elementary levels. Uh, when I talk about we have good, hard-working staff, we really do. But we want to make sure that those classrooms are conducive to learning and we don't want a few to hinder the learning of all. And so um we do hope, whatever recommendations we come back um with to the board, that you will support us. Um, and knowing that our goal, that sometimes we have to hold our students and families accountable um for the behaviors. And so we may be making some drastic changes um with the three through five policy as well. So I just want to be very forthcoming with that. But at the end of the day, we need classroom environments. We can have the best teacher, but if they don't have an environment where they can instruct then, then uh we're not going to get the results that we need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, board, does anybody have any questions at this time, based on this um packet?
Yeah, I, I was gonna see if Dr. Bunch could um answer my questions about the discipline. I, I see the comparison of the fights they kick and, and everything. Tell me, you know, when we had went into effective zero um tolerance, what, what, what does it look like? Cause it looks like some more fights happened after the zero policy kicked in. So was it making a difference or?
No, no, Ms. Foster, I'mma, I'mma chime in and I'mma let Dr. Bunch, she didn't answer. How can I put this? Unfortunately, um, you're gonna have fights. Our goal is to eliminate the fights, but our goal is when they do occur that we do take such a strong stance that it should be a deterrent for it to uh reoccur. And so the goal is to continue to reduce. I can tell you that um from listening to the principals from where we started at the beginning of the year, there has been a reduction. We do know that if you have read articles across the state that in our schools, the, from the mental health, social, emotional aspect, the altercations have increased. They have increased in sports activities, they have increased in some of your even more affluent districts where you don't even usually get activity. And so on one end, we want a discipline code so that if you do, we're handling. But where our focus really is on that social, emotional, making sure that we are getting to the root of why you're fighting. The punitive is good, but we need to get to the root of why it's occurring so that we can be more proactive on that end. So we are doing more on the social, emotional end too. And Ms. Rush can speak more to that, and that is just so important. What are the triggers? How do you handle it when you get anger, angry? And how, how do we put the right resources in place? Because there's some of our students' needs that are beyond a school guidance counselor, making sure that we are connecting them to the right um wraparound services to source twofold, want a strong discipline policy, but we also want a strong SEL program as well. What is that, the people that were involved in the fight, were they sent home for ten days? Yes, ma'am, we, we, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we really do have.
We'll continue to bring you updates since that has just been, you know, a constant conversation that we, we have been having.
I have a question, maybe not a question, um. I would like to see what the correlation, correlation is with the truancy. And I'm not even saying it's correct, with truancy. I've had um several people express that children are out. I don't know if it's correct, remember I'm not saying that. But they're saying that children are out and that there is a gap in the response from whoever that is supposed to be, if that's supposed to be us. Or is there a truancy officer or because that, and it's come up several times in the last two years? So it would be good if we mean.
We will follow, we will follow up to answer part of your question. We can get that um data for you. Um, but we do have an administrator and that's their role that they deal and work with schools and schools.
Cause my, my concern would be if they, what, how many is too many? I don't even know, but if there's, if there's too many, are they still able, are they still coming to school when they really have no, there's no possibility of them finishing the year out because they've already exhausted all of their days? And uh so that was some, and I know that y'all had some really good things that happened out in the community, but at that time I wasn't able to make it. That this question keeps coming up about um the truancy thing and I.
And we, we may try again, um, again, student services, we did try to go out in the community. Um, Ms. Pridgen did attend when we had that first at um the Church in Mullins, one of the first sessions. Um, the attendance, um, unfortunately, was just not there. And so the goal was to continue having those student services, I think we call them um community forums. And so um we'll, we'll try another one. Um, but I, you know, we had a tremendous team, we had different resources and agencies. Um, but parents um did not attend at all. But um we'll, that we won't stop, we will continue um to try to get their information to them. And if there's some other creative ways that you would like to share, um, but we, we've, we've made an effort. And so um we can make sure that we attack truancy in the next one, but we'll get that data for you.
And, and I think what they were saying um is that parents sort of needed help. When we start talking about the emotional issues that are going on, you've got a child, everybody has different parents back. And spank them like we used to, Grandma.
But speaking on behalf of our district staff, um, our faculty and staff, um, just to the board. If you could just encourage, because there are times that we have resources out there, there are times where we have a workshop on different things. There are times where we have an online to make it more convenient. Um, the attendance is just so low. So as parents come to you with concerns, tell them when we offer something, to just show up. That's all we ask, just to show up and to get. Tell them when we offer something to just show up. That's all we ask, just to show up and to get the information. And it's good to hear from the parents because it is a partnership. And so we know we don't have all the answers. We have to work with the home. Um, but we won't stop our efforts, but it would be very helpful if we can increase parent participation.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know, what is the correlation between uh street gangs? Uh, and the fights they're bringing to our schools? Now, when I did teach at Marin High School, the Bloods and the Crips were present. I distinctly remember that. Uh, and um. Sometimes initiation involves. Cutting classes. And missing school. It would be well if the board had. Some way. Communicating with the police department and see just how many gangs are in Marin County. They know. And and some of the forms of initiation. Um, this could have a good bearing on our statistics. And and why something happening over the weekend between a gang, coming to the school on Monday and they want to fight it out. That is disrupting the system. Uh, so if we could get a correlation between that. Uh, that that might give us a better outlook. I do believe that the teachers and the principals are trying their best to keep the violence down. But you can't stop. A kid from fighting. Okay, what you do, they walking down the hall, they just strike another kid and they start fighting. Uh, it happens. Uh, I've seen it in my thirty-some years in the classrooms. But what you can do, uh like you said, uh. Somehow, over the years, many parents. Are not as involved. In some cases, these kids are dictating to the parents. Some parents fear their own children. And COVID did not help. Uh, throughout the United States, that two-year period has set America back. There is a need in most schools now for not only just a counselor. But some type of person who deals with the mental. Uh, aspects. Uh, when you get a, I think it was a six-year-old student in some state when shot a teacher. That tore my heart to pieces. Six years old. Taking a gun into a school. And shooting a teacher. There's something going on. Mentally. That's affecting children all over. So if we could get some type of correlation between the gangs in Marin County. And initiation. Cause like me, I'm sure some of you have been driving like nine at night. And here comes a cop and no headlights on. And you barely miss it. This happened to me twice. That's a form of initiation. So so I hope we can get a correlation between the number of gangs in Marin County. Uh, what are some of the things they're demanding that, you know, kids must do to be initiated into that gang? Somehow work with the police department to do the best we can. I just wanted to mention that.
And Reverend Brown, of course, I'm not in a position to, you know, to speak on the data of the gang situation in Marin County. We will follow law enforcement. But what I can tell you in speaking with staff, um faculty and staff. So many of the concerns that come into our schools do not start. It either starts in the neighborhood, or it starts away from the campus. It is normally brought onto campus. And so. Um, not knowing if they're gang related or not, but a lot of our concerns internally often stop, start externally. They really do. So that's a good.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Brown. Thank you. Oh, I have one more question. Yes.
Are our young people, when they're referred to hearings, are they getting in a timely manner?
Yes.
For they can get back in school if that is the.
Yes, sir. The uh if we are, we are, they're given that ten-day window of suspension. We're having the hearings there. Uh, some of them have less than ten days, and so far we've gotten them all in within those times at times. And then after the hearing, there is a date after that time that they they that Dr. Thay gets them a letter. They're given that date. And the letter is always issued before that time. Uh, so they 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 are notified. And they're notified of the appeal process as well.
Do they have, when you put them out, do they have the opportunity for virtual school?
That is correct, sir. Yes, sir. That is one of the options. The other.
Well, we use that, um, it it, we don't just automatically. Um, if they go through the hearing process, you always have the right to appeal. And there are times when you do the appeal directly to me, because I'm not in the hearing. And that is an option. We then use it that time. Um, because there are times where you can have a good kid that just makes one day of a bad choice. That is not necessarily a child that needs to be in alternative setting. And we realize that. And so we do have those other alternatives.
And and while they're out uh on the suspension or waiting to hear from Dr. Thay, they do have their computers and are getting their work completed. Uh, and if they need extra assistance, uh they contact the principal. And the principal can get that teacher online through a team's meeting and give them live instruction if that's needed as well.
Yes, sir. Saying what we're finding out through the rec is a lot of these kids are doing their stuff, filming it to put it on TikTok. Unfortunately. They're yanking, they're jumping on people and beating them up that is being filmed to put on TikTok. So that's what we're finding out and how to deal with now.
I know you mentioned at one of the former board meetings that you all have seen an increase in the negative behavior at the recreational department as well.
Yes, ma'am. So I have a question. Um. When a fight happens. And everybody is dismantled and all the children is gone, the separate ways. How long, and I know it's ten days, and I know there's an appeal process. But how long before a parent gets in to actually figure out what's going on? Like, I guess I'm 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 coming from a personal point of view because I've had parents that contacted me lately. I've not heard anything from the school. I have not heard from the principal. The principal won't return my call back. But and so of course, I tell them, call the district. Let me tell you, have you taken all the steps that you need to take? Call the district. Well, then they feel like they've not been heard. I mean, we can only bring, we we can't say much. All I can say is contact your principal. Contact the district, and then they're still, hey, I got no results. My child is still home after twenty days. Forty-five days, still in the process of waiting for the come back to school. Me, I I sit here to make sure kids are in school and and learn.
Now, Ms. Foxworth, we need to meet with you separately because if we have kids that are out of school that long, then we do have an issue. We have not been made. Aware and I I and and so if you told them to call, they have not called our office for out of school that extensively. So we need to know who those kids are to see where they are, to make sure we know their status.
Because I I feel like parents should feel like we're, the the district should be transparent. If my child was suspended, I should know when it happened. Not through my child, through the adult. There's a communication. I'm a parent foremost. So something happens to my child, I want to know, and we can go from there. Not a child coming home and saying, hey, I'm suspended. So communication, transparency.
Share that name with us.
I will.
Thank you, Ms. Foxworth. Thank you, Ms. Foxworth.
All right.
Dr. Thay.
I'm sorry. Writing notes, writing notes, so we can do some follow-up. Um, just some general updates. We will do, continue our Wednesday walk with the board. Um, have really enjoyed those during first semester. Um, Ms. Goss will be sending out probably before the end of this week, a sign up. We will have one in February, one in March. The February Board Walk will be McCormick, because we were not able to go to McCormick. Um, we had a cancellation there first semester, and then we will do both of the high schools. So do keep that in mind, that for the February visit, we'll be doing McCormick Elementary and then um Mullins and Marin High School. The March Board Walk, we will have at the Academy for Careers in Technology. So if you have an interest of touring that facility and learning more about those programs, then you can sign up for the March. But Ms. Goss will get that information to board members. Also, I did ask the board, I thought our semester one retreat went very well with Dr. Lindsay. And at that time, I asked the board, did you want to continue um with the with the workshops? I do think that regardless of our roles, that we all need to continue to grow and learn. And so I am recommending another workshop. I do know that we're scheduled to have some budget workshops. Because now we're hitting the financial budget planning component, and so it's real busy in the spring. And so I'm recommending a summer workshop, and I know that we don't have to make a decision on that tonight. Um, but Madam Chair, if the board would consider that, then I will give you a copy of the topics. Um, she's already sent us the topics that she can cover with the board to see what your next session would need to look like. Um, food and nutrition, I do have an update. We have, we've had a lot of discussion about food and nutrition and the personnel. And so I do need to request executive session for that discussion as a personnel matter. I'm not going to go over the departmental updates. You do have that information before you. Just want to highlight that we are in the planning, um personnel and budget planning for next year. When you come back after holiday break, we're planning for twenty-three, twenty-four. And so we'll keep you updated with that. Hopefully at the next um board meeting, we will have a budget schedule. Uh, when we'll do the different things in terms of the first read, the second read, budget workshops. And so we'll have that information available at that time. Um. Otherwise, um again, not to um highlight everything, um but again, just continuously planning. Um, our PR department has been doing a great job of getting information out there. Working very closely with our HR department with um recruiting. We did not have additional information for student services since Mrs. Rush did provide it in her um information with the discipline task force. Um, federal programs um for either the February, probably February meeting. Uh, we will have, and Ms. um Goss, if you will go ahead and document that. We will, for an academic update, um give some information regarding the sped programs in the district. Um, that's something that we did not do at all during first semester, so that's something that we want to do, just to keep you updated as a board. Teaching and learning, a lot going on. Um, report cards did go out on the eleventh. Um, so as you are out and about in the community, if you have parents that say they did not receive a report card, please tell them to call the school. You need to have that report card. Um, because right now you're at that midterm, and so you have time. If the grades are not necessarily, um especially in our. Um, younger grades, you still have time to turn it around and improve. We do know at a high school, you're on a semester, so it's a little bit different. Um, but you still have time to recover. Want to tell you about um AmeriCorps. AmeriCorps, we did receive a grant from the Commission on Higher Ed. AmeriCorps, if I had to sum it up, is almost the same as the JAG program. You know, Ms. Dorothy Ford, Ms. Terry Davis for years did the JAG program in Mullins, and now Mrs. Um. Dozier, Ms. Carissa Dozier, um does it now, just a program that tries to connect. Or serve as a a gate between school and the workforce. And so we did get a very small grant there. Ms. Grant, I know we have been advertising, but we have not done, have we done enough? We have filled one um of those positions. And so that. Okay. And so we will um keep you updated on that particular program. And that again, um just came from the Commission on Higher Ed. Spelling Bee winners, um. We will have participation at the regional spelling bee, and we can provide that information, which will take place at Francis Marion. On February the sixth at the Chapman um Auditorium. And so we wish all of our participants um good luck with that, and we'll keep you updated. And we will be highlighting our other school level winners as well. And so here we just have, for your convenience, um our spelling bee winners. And we will have these, each of these students to come to the board for recognition, as well as anyone who wins regionally. Um, I am requesting um executive session again for personnel action. Um, also, well, both my items are for personnel action. And I do know that you have other items listed on the agenda for personnel actions as well. Last, Ms. Um, Madam Chair, are our trip requests. We have one um request for our ACT that is for HOSA, which is a Health Occupational Science Association. I am recommending that these students do um be able to attend um the state competition in Charleston. And I'm asking for board approval for this particular trip. And Reverend Brown, we do have a male and a female chaperone.
What did you say?
We, ma'am.
What did you say?
We have male and female chaperones for this particular trip because we did have two males.
Right. Any questions? About ACT Sports Medicine, host of competition? Reverend Brown?
On the travel.
Yes, ma'am.
One that we have. On the one to the ACT Sports Medicine, what's what's that, HOSA?
HOSA, yes, ma'am.
Uh, they do not list, as did the other school, the name and address of the hotel or their stay, uh staying. It's blank on this form. And I noticed when I read some other information. It says that if the hotel is in close proximity of the center. That uh the hotels do not require a chaperone to be on the shuttle bus. I like to make sure our uh chaperones, okay, how close or far away it is. That they're on that shuttle bus with our students.
Um, Reverend Brown, the expectation um regardless of how relaxed an organization may have their guidelines. Our expectation is when we have a trip approved, that our staff members follow board policy and expectations with our trip um travel. And so we will reiterate that, but that is the expectation.
We do need the name of the hotel on this uh. The HOSA. Thank you.
I think it was the Embassy. I thought I saw it somewhere.
It's Embassy Suites.
Embassy Suites, but I can't find it now, but I saw it, I thought.
He's talking about the paper here on the.
We're talking on this one.
On the front.
To protect uh the school district and the board. One school listed exactly where they're staying, the name of the hotel and the address, but the one going to HOSA didn't. That square is blank. And and normally is filled in. You see what I'm talking about? If you compare the two forms, we know that uh McCormick Elementary is going to the Holiday Inn. Yeah, they give the exact address and the phone number to the hotel. On the first form, none of this information is stated. It should be.
Included it, it's in the packet, but I make sure they write it on the front. They have the hotel um information in the packet, but we'll make sure they write it on the front of the form. But it is in the packet though.
Any other questions? If not, if I have a motion to accept the um request. For ACT Sports Medicine Host's School Activity Field Trip. Thank you. Um, we have a motion by Mr. Hill. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Pridgen. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's bring it to the vote. All those in favor for this um request, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and the motion carries. Dr. Thay, shall we move to the next?
Yes, and so the next one.
All right, if you'll look, the second one is a request from McCormick Elementary for the Lego competition. Um.
And we are um very excited. I am asking for the board to um approve this trip. Um, this is our first year of having an elementary Lego team. And our students have worked extremely hard, as well as the sponsors. And so we do ask. Um, that you do approve this particular trip, which will take place, let's see, is it in Abbeville? Abbeville, South Carolina. And Wright to Wright Middle School. And they have met the requirements in terms of um chaperones. I think that's awesome. I take the motion.
All right, we have a motion to accept the request by McCormick Elementary for the Lego competition. Um, for um January twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, that motion has been given by Ms. Foxworth. Do we have a second? Was that Ms. White? Thank you, Ms. White. We have a motion, probably second. Any more discussion? With no more discussion, we'll bring this motion to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Um, we have no public participation tonight. So we'll move on to number eleven.
At Madam Chair, I do want to acknowledge that we do have an organization that would like to provide something to board members. When you break for executive session, they will come up to the board members. I just wanted to make aware of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Thay. If you'll look under that, we had a. Thank you, Dr. Pathet. If you'll look under that, we had a, a request to consider reviewing. Policy ARBD dash R, Organization of the Board. We did go through a full review of all policies. Ms. White, under your leadership. And, um, at this time, I would think it would take a motion for us to consider reviewing it. But I'm going to open it up to discussion. And Reverend Brown, I'll turn that over to you since you made this request.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't. Turn it to get a copy.
Madam Chair, um, let me first say this has no reflection on you nor the vice chair. I've been on this board eighteen consecutive years and seven of three superintendents. And, uh, each year, I dedicate myself to doing something. Uh, for an example, uh, Paula can verify, I traveled with her about three years. Uh, I was dedicating to, dedicated to defending her. Uh, that she had, uh, good and fair hiring practices for her district, and I proved that. Uh, there was another year, I selected, uh, to focus on the finances of the district. And we did that. In fact, we changed accountants after I did that. For the next three years, I wanted to focus on board policies. Things that will, uh, protect the chair as well as the vice chair. Uh, and protect any board member. Uh, I sat on the three excellent chairs. There was one, uh, who was not. And when I made a suggestion that before you become chair or vice chair, you had to have so many units with the school board association. The board agreed. So that nobody could win an election and then immediately become what? The chair. They needed training. Right now, what I'm looking at proposing, uh, is listed before you. Uh, these are two things. First suggestion, suggested policies needed. Uh, for removing the chair or vice chair of the county board. This is regardless of who comes in the future, or who may be at the present. Uh, and I'm going to read what I have, but then at the end, I have policies regarding. Uh, the chair or the vice chair meeting with the superintendent. These are missing from our policies. Uh, something we can think about when it comes up, uh, to renew policies in the future. Number one, whenever it can be proven that the chair. Has met or is meeting with three board members, either in person or via phone. Instead of meeting with the entire board, this will automatically remove the chair, vice chair from his or her position. And a new chair or vice chair shall be elected. You already know from our attorney that, uh, if four of us get together, that is in violation of state policy. Uh, and, and, but it's just not enshrining in our policy. Number two, whenever can be proven that the chair or the vice chair has made an attempt. Or was in the process of making an attempt to pressure any board member to vote a particular way. On an upcoming voting issue. Uh, this constitutes harassment. Chair and vice chair shall be automatically removed from his or her position, and a new chair or vice chair shall be elected. Number three, the chair of vice chair cannot poll the board on any issue. This is the equivalent of taking a vote outside of a duly called board meeting. Uh, when Diane was secretary, and then she started polling the board. The attorney informed her and the board that we can't do that. That we all have to be together at the same time to make a decision, and not just calling somebody on the telephone. Uh, it's called polling the vote. It's like taking a vote. Under the next section, I have policies regarding, uh, the chair, vice chair meeting with the superintendent. Whenever the chair, vice chair meets with the superintendent, another board member must be present. Uh, along with the secretary of the board, who shall record the minutes of such a meeting. And make the minutes available to other board members in executive session. Uh, the superintendent needs to be given a certain date of a meeting and its time. Uh, number four, the board will set a designated day and time each month. The chair of our share to meet with the superintendent. And the chair or vice chair will provide the superintendent an agenda twenty-four hours in advance. Uh, this allows the superintendent to know exactly when a meeting is going to take place. What is going to be discussed, and to be prepared for the meeting. Uh, again, let me say, sitting here on the three different, uh, superintendents. Uh, it's by God's grace, I've been here eighteen consecutive years. So I have seen and amassed a lot of things that has divided our board. And I would love to see, uh, everybody protected. Board member, chair, vice chair, superintendent. And we dealt with the policies, I think, for this year, last year. When it comes up again, just hold on to the sheet. Want to add something? Uh, feel free. What I think, we all need to go back sometimes. This is what I do. I just pick up the board policy manual. And I begin to go back and just look at some things. So hopefully this, uh, will come up when we address policies and procedures in the future. And this guarantees protection of our chair, vice chair, and every single board member, as well as any superintendent. Uh, we had a chair. Uh, who was very bush in the past. We had a chair. Uh, Bonnie may recall, we, we, we were on the board at that time together. Uh, we did a whole lot of things. And, uh, it was a tough season, those, that two-year period. So hopefully, I'm, I'm hoping that we will look at this when it's time to redo policies. We will update these policies, uh, so that everything will go smoother. And that's why I wanted to bring this up. And if I come across more policies. Uh, again, I will call you as I deal with this. And that's where you put it on the agenda, uh, so we can address it. And this is something any board member can do. Uh, I'm not a bookworm. Don't just sit up and show the policies. I do have a life, but, uh, I take me on the board seriously. These eighteen years have been good. Uh, this will be my final term. I'm seventy-three. I believe that the old generation must prepare the younger generation to take our seat. Be forever. And I will do my best to select someone to campaign. And take my seat three years from now. Uh, and I think all of us, uh, I think I might be the oldest one up here. I don't know. But, uh, I like for my wisdom of the eighteen years to remain after I'm gone. And so again, I think these are things that can help any board. Check any chair, vice chair. And I thank you for putting this on the agenda. And giving me the opportunity to share this with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Brown. Um, board, I will, since this is new information. Um, I would, I think it would be appropriate for us to take it with us and, and to consider it. And we'll return for a discussion. All this is that, does that please the board at this time? All right, Reverend Brown, we'll take your, your, uh, your suggestions into consideration. And we'll return for a discussion at the next meeting. Is that all right with you?
Sounds great.
Thank you. And I appreciate you really taking your time. You're always very thoughtful and thank you for this. Um, next, um, finance workshop, we're going to look at, um. Possibly getting some dates for that from.
We will. Um, Ms. Pritchett has already reached out, um, to also. Normally, we have our traditional budget workshops where we're going over revenues and expenditures. Um, but I do know that you had a request too, to do a session with Mr. Finney as well. So I think she's already reached out.
And Jo, and more or less just to, I think, as Reverend Brown just said, educate ourselves. So that's really the purpose is, um, because the audit is important. And we know your work goes, but for us to be well-educated, I think it's a great thing. And he's been willing to, to offer that. So we'll hear from that. And again, thank you for reaching out. Um, legislative delegation, I need to apologize. I got all of those that did not attend. I had the book of resolutions, and I will bring that back at the February meeting. I just walked out of the door without them. But if you did not attend, I made sure I picked you up. One of the resolution, resolution books, so you could know what was discussed at the, um, legislative delegation. Um, board compensation, um. I'm looking at our time. We can discuss this at this time, or we can hold off on that. Um, for a later date, because we do still have a good bit. And the compensation with the discussion as to receiving a bonus. Um, I think because we do have a copy of the State Ethics Commission. I think we need to return to that first, before we have a discussion about giving ourselves personal bonuses. So if you would take time to review this, and, um, as you can see, it's hole punched. To be placed in your notebook. But if you're, if you're, um, good with this, could we bring that up at our February meeting?
And I just want to make sure, Madam Chair, you're, you're talking about the bonus show we're talking about for Christmas. If we didn't want it, we don't have to have it, right?
Correct. But we need to discuss where it falls ethically.
But if we vote not to have it, we don't have to discuss anything about it.
Correct. We, we do. We, we can, we can vote not to receive a bonus. Um, and I am looking over at our attorney, Attorney Boykin, would you have anything to share on this point? As it relates to this discussion of a, of a, um, bonus during the holidays. I know in the past, it has been given to board members. We did not do it this year, but the question was, was it ethical for us to give ourselves a bonus?
I think given the nature of the question, it would probably be appropriate to seek an opinion from the ethics. I'm happy to begin the question.
Could you, could you do that for us? All right. I think that would be an appropriate stance for us to do.
I wa- I don't want the public to think we're asking for, I mean, I, that we're asking for a bonus so that we question one. Did we? Well, we did have some board members that wanted it. So I think that's where we brung up the question, where some of us are opting not to get it. I, it's different things that we. We, we have an option to turn it down. You have an option to turn it down or get it. And I guess they were trying to figure out, should we? Okay, fine.
I, I think, let us, if, um, Attorney Boykin, if you'll just provide clarity on this, on this point. Um, again, you have the right to, to dismiss it, but because there is a request for it. I want to make sure that we're following appropriately. Um, I have, I'm getting ready to pass this out to everyone. Take one. All right, um, you will see, we discussed having board committees. I requested for you to send me any possible committee. I know that finance is one, and that, that we had, we also had the others were requests. So what I would like to do is poll your interest tonight. And if you'll number them one through five, which one interests you the most? Which one interests you the second, and third, fourth, and fifth? If you feel strongly about one or two, but you don't care about the others, whether you're on them or not, just let me know. Then I will put these committees together and then, um, select a chair for each committee. Uh, there is an understanding that no more than three can serve on here. If you have another idea for a committee and did not get that to me. If you will put a dot down and write that down as well. So does it mean that we can't add a committee to this? Um, we certainly can. All right. Yes, it will do that tonight. And I'll just, yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a question, maybe it's a concern. I don't know what these committees are and what it's comprised of, what they will be. Doing, for example, teach for advocacy, some kind of cultural appreciation. Um, you know, what, I don't have a clue what that is. I think that before, and this is my opinion, we decide that we want to be involved in something. Think it would be appropriate to know what it is that these committees do, you know, because it may be that it might not need to be a committee. And, you know, and we might be going somewhere that we don't need to go.
Okay. Well, the finance has always been a committee that's withstanding. So that, that goes without. The salary study is follow-up to, um, the work. What, who was the gentleman that did the salary study with us?
Mr. Gerald Moore, um. Can't think of their, the name of their group consultant.
Y'all aren't ready to present that to the board?
Yes. Yes, we're working on that.
So you, you see where I'm going? Because now, I mean, if they're ready to present, we don't really need a committee for that. If they're ready to present to the board.
It's to follow up with his presentation that he had with us at Anderson Brothers Bank. And to utilize the information that he shared to, as we move forward to discuss how it's done.
So Madam Chair, so like saying salary study and finance, those could be combined.
That's what I'm thinking, is that we can bring.
Bring, bring like, bring this back. Maybe you email everybody with the description of what this is, because like, those two can go together. And, and.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I will say that, um, and I know I have no discussion regarding the committees, that's board business. Um, but you would not want a group solely working on salary study information, or a group solely working on the budget. Because everything is contingent upon revenues. You can't impact with all the expenditures. And not having the revenues to support it. So I do think those two need to be aligned together. I, I do.
Well, then what we'll do is we'll start, I will send out this with an, with an explanation. And then I'll put the finance and salary study piece together. Does that, does that help? And then, well, you, if you'll respond to that, please, I would be appreciative.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Finance, so it should be a way to find the money to do the salary scale.
Because I'm thinking now it's time for us to have those tough discussions that some of us don't want to have.
You gotta.
We're ready now to go to finding the money.
We got to find the money somewhere. We've already had the salary study.
Right.
All right. Well, then I will, this is the only way we can figure this out, is to have open discussions. Instead of just putting it out there and appointing, this gives you a chance to choose what you would like to do. And if there's something I didn't put on there that you would like me to put on here, I'll add that and then I'll send that out. And what I'll do is I will do a, um, a, just a, a brief. Dr. Pathet, just a, a brief catch-up to. a, just a, a brief, Dr. Bethay, just a, a brief catch-up to make sure we're on the same page as we can. Is that good with you?
That is good. It sounds like what I'm hearing is that they are asking for perhaps a scope of what each committee, what the task, the directive, um, I think that may be important. And then that makes sure, that makes sure that if you have three board members, that the goals are correlated, that they understand what the task and the outcomes are instead of just meeting and not really having parameters. So.
Okay. I think that's great. I do.
And then I think while working on this, if we look back a couple months, maybe a six to eight months ago, we had some committees formed that actually had like descriptions of what you were doing, like the finance. And I think that legislation or delegation, it, it made like a broad.
So you all have done that, you're saying?
We, we, we weren't, like Reverend Brown is old finance, cause we and Ms. Patricia.
But you have, but you have a description, you have.
Well, we did initially, Chief, um, Ms. White gave it to us after we were placed on the, the committee.
Yeah.
Reverend Brown was helping us understand when we get the budget, that's the paper we hit.
You have committees that we've never had before. So it may be helpful to have.
I, I know what teacher asked us in.
Objectors.
Okay. We'll, we'll pull this together instead of discussing tonight, send that out and then please respond. That's the only way I can get any information is if you respond to those, to those e, um, emails. Thank you. And we'll move on to the next. Do we have any?
I have, I have some.
Yes, yes.
And this comes up, I'm gonna say my piece and I'm not gonna care what nobody says afterwards. Let that be on record. When we, when we did the, um, when we had the groups, I called everyone and asked would they be willing to serve on something based on either their interest? And when I say their interest, one person wanted to do to be a part of the, um, legislative delegation. Um, uh, and I asked if people wanted to do it. I asked if they would do it. The only person I did not speak to was you, Ms. Atkinson, because you were out of pocket for a couple of months. So, you know, when, when you say that I did something, like I said, the legislative delegations was something that someone wanted to do. There is a whole piece of work that goes with the legislation, um, delegation that is not a part of our, our policy because it was never due. But I did not make, I did not assign, I asked. And then, but it, it keeps coming up like I did some kind of bullish tactic and, and just kind of bullied somebody along. I, I asked Reverend Brown, I said, Reverend Brown, since you've been on finance, you know, my, you asked to be on the delegation, you want to be the delegation. And I asked because there is no policy. There still is no policy. When we came, uh, when we went to the, um, regional meeting, that was a whole topic about having a policy and we still don't have a policy. But we're operating in such a way that would suggest we have a policy. But we don't have a policy. But I did not, um, just randomly select. I asked, and I asked also with some people based on the skill sets or where they worked, to be honest. So I, you know, I, I, I can't, and I'm not even asking anybody to change their narrative. I don't care. I really don't. But I wanted to make sure it was on record because it seems like it keeps coming up. And even, uh, uh, you know, after a while, even a hit dog will holler. And I'm hollering. Loose me from this discussion of me placing people randomly, like I bullied someone on. I'm, I'm too thoughtful of a person as far as by processing to come up with random ones. I don't random. I, I don't, I don't random. And so I'm just asking the vote, the board to please, because some of you aren't here, you wouldn't know. But this, that was the process. I called, I asked, there was agreement. And, um, and if anybody didn't agree, the only person that didn't get a chance, like I said, would have been Ms. Atkinson, because she was not in place for a couple of months. So when she came back, what was left was basically, you know, what, what it ended up being. So anyway, I, I, uh, my apologies to you guys, but, you know, your, your mama give it to you where you give, where you give, where you do. And, and so I keep and I kept, and I'm asking to be loose of that.
I, I have something to say, if you don't mind.
Yes, Ms. White. I'm sitting here, I was here, I was at the meeting. I never thought you bullied. I thought that you held it well with the committees and each committee that you gave us. So I'm sorry that you feel any type of way, but I, I'm gonna sit here and let you know, I've never felt bullied by you. If I did, you would know it. Um, you, I'm one of the people, you don't have to guess it. I, I can't, I don't have a filter. You, you know who I am. Um, I'm, I'm sorry that it came across any kind of way other than what it seemed. You've done a wonderful job. When it came down to making those phone calls and seeing what we were interested in, this is just a different, this is not that. This is not it. So what, what, what I see, Ms. Patricia saying, and I know it's not open discussion, but this is our board communication. Um, I think that she's gonna go back and I think that, I think that we all can go back and just shoot her some ideals she wasn't here. But being not here, being that we're bored, we stick together either way. So I, I want you to know. I'm sorry, however, I heard you. So I, I wanna make sure I publicly say it. You never bullied. I wouldn't let you anyway, but I mean, which you did. So, um, I, I think that being that it's a board and we stay corrected, like you said, when you act that you, you see it. Um, sometimes we're not always where we need to be at, but sometimes it's just a phone call. And I think sometimes this is.
Thank you, Ms. Foxworth. And Ms. White, I'd love to talk, that we can clear up any, any concerns. Thank you.
Madam Chair, knowing that this is board business, but just feeling like, um, just wanna request that perhaps the board pulls committees, the policy that governs board committees, help work with the attorney to establish some parameters and how you administer that particular policy and how you need to administer committees. Um, as you're aware, you have to be very delicate on board committees, um, on the information that is provided and information that is covered, is not being covered in a general board meeting setting. But also there are different kinds of committees where some boards have committees of a whole. Like you get into a larger districts where you have committees of a whole. But I think the attorney can probably provide some guidance and help walk the board through that process. And I would just ask the board to consider that, instead of the board just having a discussion among yourselves, look at it from a legal perspective.
I love that idea. Do we need a motion for that?
He's good. Thank you.
For you, Ms. Atkinson, do we need a motion for that? For you to, are you good with just working with?
I can, I mean, if we feel a motion, it's needed. I certainly will pop not. I will reach out to, to Attorney Boykin.
Just think you work with superintendent, the attorney and then set up and.
And then I'll get back with you.
I think that I need to be in the committee discussion of do I? Just consult. Okay, okay.
In the planning stages of it.
Sounds good.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think, I don't know if my title is the right title because I, I train.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, my, because when Ms. White called me, she knew my financial background. She knew I go to Atlanta and trained in Atlanta on finances. Uh, she knew all of that about me. So when she asked me, I said, sure. But I'm more of a trainer for those coming on to the board. So maybe the title should be Chair, uh, I don't know if I'm a Chair anything. I'm just a trainer. So, so trainer of what? Uh, newborn members? And we sit down and I taught them about all of the bank accounts, uh, that the general treasury balance was not the real balance. These are the things I'm skilled at. And, uh, I think they enjoyed it. Uh, I know I did. And, uh, before I could schedule another one, I had a death of a family. So we can get back to it. But I, I'm more of a trainer in finances, uh, than anything. So that the newborn members coming on, uh, you know, they see all of these initials and stuff. I explain it. And it, it, the first time I think we stayed about two hours and, and, and nobody was rushing to leave. Finance has got a real interest in it. So I think I'm a trainer.
Well, Reverend Brown, if I put it out there that you're offered to do workshops with any of the board members, you're good with that?
Oh, yes.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I know finances.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And Reverend Brown, I, I wanna say thank you with that as well. It's, it's one thing about, um, I think it should just be a new board training for you to do it because you have that experience. Because looking at me, I have a master's in finance and business. So I learned so much not knowing what those, just know you need to do. You need to work on that. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, um, we'll move on to agenda items for next month. If you have any, would you send those to me and I'll send out a reminder as usual? Um, just for your information, um, Dr. Bethay and I get to gather the first Tuesday of each month to work on that agenda. And, um, if there's anything you need to share, um, Dr. Bethay, that's basically it's.
And that, um, and that is very helpful because if there's information that we need to gather from our team, because we try to get the agenda out, that gives our team enough time to have a discussion and get the information requested. It's why we asked for, for the first Tuesday. So that, um, we have a week and a half to get the information. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Also, your South Carolina ethic statements or economic interests are due by February 15th. For those of you that did run this year, you knew that you had to do the January, and I sent out a reminder so that you'd make sure, and then I'll send out a reminder for this as well.
You have to do it every month?
No, we do it quarterly.
But why, why January?
Well, you're doing end of the year. So this will be the end of the year. There's a lot of taking of information. Um, one other thing, our next meeting is February 21st. And at this time, is everybody gonna attend the convention? We've got a hundred percent attendance? No, you can't go with this, Miss Brown. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. But everybody is, okay? All right. I hate, I hate that. One thing that's not on your agenda before we go into executive session is I have to say a, a big thank you to Dr. Bethay and to Ms. Galls. We have our notebooks here with information. They're yours. If you don't wanna carry them with you, you can. Is it all right if we leave them here and find a place to put them? But if you wanna carry these, it has all the information that was requested. So if there's things that are missing, and I think there's one document that we're still working on.
And we'll keep, this will be a fluid notebook. As you know, different things come out, we made.
We'll add to it. So if you wanna leave it here, or if you'd like to take it and peruse it and do, and Reverend Brown, like she says, doesn't put a whole lot of time in reading a lot. But Reverend Brown, we you might enjoy this for some nightly, uh, bedtime reading. Put you to sleep. All right, um, I think we have everything. Um, one last thing, uh, over here, Ms. Galls said that we have received a book, um, Armstrong Williams, who also actually is part, is author to this. And, um, you can see that he has Dr. Carson and Benjamin Crump. These are really amazing people. So they're over here with Ms. Galls. Make sure you pick yours up. And I think one book has not come in. So we'll make sure you get that. But again, just a thank you note to, um, Armstrong Williams for sharing this with us. So that'll be with you. So with that being said, um, we need to have a motion. Um, in just a minute, we're going into executive session for personal actions. Um, also the superintendent's evaluation. I don't think there's any legal matters or legal briefing at this time, I mean contractual or legal briefing. So it should be a relative short executive session. So do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion going to executive.
Thank you, Ms. White. I have, thank you, Ms. Foxworth. We have a motion properly seconded. Let's bring that to vote. All those in favor of moving into executive session, out of general session, may have, um, affirmative.
All right.
Uh, any opposed? And so the ayes care and we'll take a few minutes to break to go into executive.
So much good.
They told us to take one when we signed the ethics name. Everybody get.
All right. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session in general session at this time?
I'll take the most.
Thank you, Ms. Foxworth. Do I have?
I second it.
Thank you, Ms. White. We have a motion as properly second. All those who vote to, um, I to come out of, um, executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And so we are now officially back in the general session. Um, just to state there are no actions were taken during executive session, um, at this time. Uh, before we close out, is there any other business?
Madam Chair, I'm hoping that we, uh, go ahead and close out our meeting.
Well, um.
I didn't hear what you said.
I thought this was a motion.
We have any more business that relates to our agenda tonight?
Personnel action.
Yes. Yes. Um, so we argue a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for.
I make a motion. We accept the recommendation on the personal hiring and resignations.
All right. Thank you, Mr.. So we have a, we have a motion. It's probably second by Mr. Foxworth. Are there any discussions? With no discussions, we'll bring it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now, do we have any more business?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. White. And thank you, Ms. Foxworth. Ms. White's motion probably second by Ms. Foxworth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Because I have it and we are adjourned.